This is the meeting that would have been had Tuesday.
Good afternoon. I'd like to welcome everyone to the November 10, 2016, meeting of the City County Planning Board. Would you please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance. Flag of the United States of America, this is a republic for which it stands, one nation under God and in this world, with liberty and justice for all.
Today's meeting is being filmed by some TV digital media. It'll be broadcast at 10:00 a.m. tomorrow morning, again at 4:00 p.m. Sunday afternoon. Our first order of business today is the consent agenda. These are items of which the petitioner is requesting withdrawal or continuance, or items which staff has recommended approval and no one has signed up to speak in opposition. For our public hearings today, each site has a total of 12 minutes. There is no rebuttal period. Once the public hearing is closed and the board goes into work session, no one is permitted to speak unless a board member asks a question. For general use zoning districts, the planning board must consider the full range of uses allowed in the district. Therefore, the petitioner may not refer to a specific use of the property. For special use district zoning, however, must be very specific about the uses and how the site will be developed. Items under Section B of our agenda require final approval by either the city council or the county commissioners. As such, votes taken today are recommendations that will go to those bodies for their consideration. If you are addressing the board today, before you begin your remarks, please give us your name, address, and zip code for the record. First item of business, approval of the minutes at the October 13, 24, and 27 meetings, or any additions, corrections, or...
Motion for approval.
Second. Motion, Mr. Mulligan. Second, Mr. Lamb. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you. Now calling Aaron King to present our consent agenda.
All right. First item is F-1561, and this is a request to rezone a little over three-quarters of an acre from RS9 to GBS, general business, special use. And you can see the site there in yellow. You may remember this was continued from your September meeting. At that time, it was a general use GB request. Two months, they have resubmitted as a special use request. Small triangular piece of property on the east side of Peters Creek Parkway, just north of Davidson County. You see there's a mixture of residential zoning to the north and to the east and to the south, and then some commercial zoning to the west and to the southwest of there. This is the site plan that was submitted with this request. You can see it makes use of the small commercial building that's located in that southwest corner. I believe it's around 880 square feet. One access point onto Peters Creek Parkway, five parking spaces, and then the remainder of that area is the display area for the outdoor display retail use. They are providing a type-two buffer to the south adjacent to the multifamily units that are approved but not built, and that would include a six-foot opaque fence to try to mitigate any impacts to the multifamily property there. Along the eastern property line adjacent to the RS9, they're providing a type-three buffer, and they're retaining as much of that existing vegetation as possible. They have agreed just conditions for signage, for lighting, and any chain-link fencing that'll be black vinyl coated. As staff reviewed this, we feel this addresses a lot of the concerns that we had about the general use request. It is consistent with the area plan, and we recommend approval of this GBS request.
No one has signed up. Is anyone here opposed to this recommendation? If so, now I declare the public hearing closed.
Motion for approval.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Lamb. Second by Mr. Mulligan. Any discussion?
Yeah, I had a question for you, Aaron. It mentioned in the staff report that they would need a variance because of the building being in such close proximity to that buffer area. If they were to get a variance, what would be removed from the buffer? What would they need to take out?
It's really...
Actually, they did have the property surveyed, and that structure is outside of the buffer yard, so they will not need a buffer yard variance.
Oh, okay. All right. And then the other question I had was about the fence. Is it going to be inside or outside of the buffer?
It should be on the inside of the plants toward the multifamily property.
Okay. The first, the fence is going to be closer to the subject property?
Yes. It should be.
And then the plantings are going to be on the outside?
Correct.
Okay. And I think you might have shown before the proposed development next to it, the multifamily. I just wanted to see how that would link up, you know, like along that border.
We might still have it in here. Let me check for you.
Yes. I think the recreation area right there where his cursor was, is a small little recreation area right there.
That's the common property line right there.
Right. So that first building there abuts up to it, and then a little picnic area, yes.
And the fence would be on the other side of the greenery there?
Correct.
Okay. If it's time to make a few comments?
Sure.
I just, I have a concern about this proposal really being compatible with the multifamily next to it, and I do think that we supported unanimously that multifamily development, and doing so really changed the conditions here to the point where I really feel like the area plan recommendations don't reflect the reality. They don't reflect the conditions that we have now because we've got a multifamily approval there. And looking at that whole area, if we were comprehensively planning it, I think that this portion, which is recommended to be commercial in the area plan, might be looked at differently now with the multifamily there and considered more, something more transitional, something like low-intensity commercial, which I think is appropriate here. I just don't think that automobile display or, you know, outdoor display is appropriate. I think that the other uses are fine, the retail uses, the services A-type uses, but it's just that outdoor display, I just think that it's going to make the development of the rest of the area problematic in meshing well with that residential development.
Any other comments? Okay. Any other comments, board members? We have a motion for approval. All in favor? Opposed?
I put it.
Four. Okay. That passes. Okay. Thank you.
All right. Next item is C-1 subdivision 2016-062, and this is a request for a conventional subdivision in RS9 zoning. It's about 10 and a half acres. You can see there in yellow. It's kind of east of Peace Haven, west of Lynn Haven, and you can see there's two existing public streets that stub into this property, one from the north, Perks Crossing, Line Ridge Drive coming into it from the south, and then actually a third, and that southwest corner, Sertes Road, actually stubs into the property as well. This is the proposed subdivision plan. You can see it includes a public street that connects to those two existing public streets. There would also be a cul-de-sac at the end of Sertes with about four lots off of that. Again, this is just a conventional RS9 subdivision, not a PRD, so we're not looking at open space and things of that nature. All of the lots are over 9,000 square feet in size and minimum lot width of 65. They have complied with the minimum requirements of the UDO, and staff would recommend approval of this request.
Mr. Wishers, the board, this is not a move approval.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Lamb. Second, Mr. Mulligan. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Roberts will present the first public hearing case.
Next item on your agenda is zoning case number 3309. Petitioners are David Burkholz and Harriet Burkholz, and the request is for a 1.1-acre site located on the northwest side of Reedsville Road, south of Old Blues Creek Road, and it's a special use limited request from RS9 residential single-family to NOL, Neighborhood Office, special use limited for the two uses of offices and residential building, single-family. This is Legacy's Growth Management Plan. It's located along Highway 158 in the yellow growth management area, three suburban neighborhoods. And this is a zoning map showing the subject property there in yellow in the center. Currently has a single-family house on it. Again, it's a zone RS9, as are all the surrounding properties. I do have some IP zoning further to the southwest and a small LO site adjacent to that property. Aerial photograph showing the development pattern surrounding the site. This is the 2011 Northeast Suburban Area Plan, and it recommends continued yellow, single-family, low-density residential on this site and the surrounding properties. You can see across 158, Cruz Methodist Church is located there. That would be the blue institutional use, and then institutional use further down to the adjacent of the church, further to the southwest. On site, these images, this is looking from 158 into the subject property that would be used as an office if approved. Directly to the right, another single-family home. Looking northeast on Reedsville Road, the site is just off the image to the left, looking across the street into Cruz Methodist Church, across Reedsville Road, and looking back southwest on Reedsville Road towards Winston-Salem. So you can see it's really primarily a residential area. Certainly Reedsville Road is a very busy road, but the area plan took into account that and does not recommend non-residential zoning along this portion. Staff is concerned that if approved, it could lead to other non-residential rezoning requests around in this area. So again, the area plan recommends low-density residential for the subject property. The site is surrounded by RS9 properties, and we just don't see the need to single out this one particular property. And the request may establish a precedent for other office rezonings in the future, so staff recommendation is for denial. And I'll be glad to answer any questions.
What's the purple, the industrial to the south? What is that? It's not adjoining. It's on the, yeah.
That's a mixed-use area along the Human Service Alliance property there at the intersection of Greensboro Road.
On the east side of 158?
Further out.
This way down.
Talking about this?
Yeah. What's not?
Oh, yeah. That's industrial along, it's actually, there's a good bit of LI zoning along Salem Lake. Probably was put there before the watershed regulations were in place.
All right. Thank you.
Yes.
Any other questions, the staff, this time? Okay. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Sign up proponent, Mr. Burkholz.
We don't have any overheads, but I do have a handout.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Ready?
Yes, sir. Hi, I'm David Burkholz. I'm here with my wife, Harriet. We moved to Asheville about three years ago, live at 18 Timber Moss Drive there in Asheville. We bought this property about 12 years ago. My wife's a licensed professional counselor, and our hope is to use the property as a counseling office, which we really think would be of benefit to the surrounding community. As we've watched this area develop, we saw the veterinary clinic, which I believe was referenced as the LOL use, just immediately to the south of our property. And then the property, that was in 2014, 2015. In 2014, the area immediately adjacent to our property on the south was approved as a transmission tower site. And so, you know, we've got, we've got a church and a veterinary clinic, and then a transmission tower, all contiguous to the south of us. The house immediately to the south of us, we were talking with the Wicker family that owns that, and they indicated that the DOT has talked to them. They're going to run the road right up to where their front porch is, which means they'll probably take about half of our front yard. So, you know, we're looking at this large four-lane, high four-laning of 158, and the change and impact that that's going to make to that neighborhood, and particularly that side of the road, as those road improvements are made, and feel that our request for, you know, low-use office, the NO usage, is appropriate in the circumstances, and is just kind of the last step in this progression that we've seen. The property to the, immediately to the right of us, which was shown in the picture, hasn't been occupied for the last six or seven years, and, you know, that whole area really, even now, because the roadwork on 158 has been approved and is moving forward, is really changing. So I think that this change is inevitable. I asked the planning group here to consider, you know, the benefit to the community, the fact that I think it's inevitable that it's going to change, and allow us to proceed with the NO zoning and do what we would like to do. My wife is a licensed professional counselor, and, you know, she's been in the business for quite a while, so that's the reason behind our request. And Harriet, did I miss anything?
Well, I would just, do I need to come up?
Please.
Just like to indicate, the pictures on the front of the packet that I handed out, each one of those commercial properties are within a quarter-mile of our house. So it's, you know, there is commercial going on there, very close to our house, and I believe that the use of this property would be a service to the community of Waukatah, Kearnsville, and East Asheville. So that's really all I had to say. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Any questions for me?
Did you have your, I got a question.
Yes, sir.
I was just looking at your letter here about your neighborhood meeting that you had last night, I guess.
Right.
Can you tell me how many people attended and what?
Well, we just had one of our friendly neighbors from up the street come by, and the representative of the council person drove by, I think. So we didn't have any significant attendance when we had the meeting. Also, we did send out letters to everybody, two different letters. We got a couple of phone calls asking some questions. We didn't get any indication of any reason not to do it, and mostly just support from the neighborhood.
I actually did speak directly with the neighbor on one side of us, and she had some questions, and she didn't have any objections. I did send a letter to her, ask her to be here if she had any objections, and she didn't. So that's all we have.
Any other questions?
Yes, I have a question as well. So on this map that's on the screen, can you connect some of the images on the handout?
Yeah.
Like point to them?
Yeah.
Can you show them how to do that?
Well, yeah, I've got one. Yeah, okay.
Thanks.
Yeah, okay. So immediately south is the Edgewood Church. The pictures with the railing in the front, which indicates vet zoning, which is immediately next to the church, is the LOL veterinary. The picture, you got a picture?
Yes.
We don't, we don't have a picture of the, the page following these pictures is an aerial photograph of the lot immediately behind, or next to our house, to the south of our house. Let's see. And this is the area where the cell tone, the cell tower special use permit was issued. And then you can see the little red dot here, which is our property. The other things are, you know, the local gas station, the convenience store, the car wash, again, all within a quarter-mile, you know, maybe five or six houses up the block.
But they're not in that circle?
No, they're not. They're not in the circle. Just a couple areas that I...
Are there, are they anywhere on that map that you can point to?
This one site right here is this site right there. The car wash and the gas...
It's a little further up. I think it's just beyond the edge of the, the upper edge of the map.
Thank you.
And the DOT has not contacted you about your property as far as widening the road?
No, not yet. Any other questions?
Not at this time, maybe before we're through, there might be.
Okay. Thank you for your time.
We'll finish. No one else has signed up? Anyone else like to speak in support of this? Anyone like to speak in opposition? I declare the public hearing closed and going to work session.
Is this, I may need to ask, is this, would this be considered a spot? How's a spot zoning work into this?
Well, this very well could be considered a spot zone if it was a more of an intense commercial use, but the NO district, I believe, has been evaluated, and it's so close to a home occupation that it's not considered a spot zone if it was to be challenged.
What are the limits on home occupation? Why can't they...
I think it's 25% of your floor area, you have to live in the house, and then it's really an accessory to the main use of dwelling there, yes. So they would have to live in the...
When you say they have to live in it, does that have to be their primary occupancy?
Yes, for the person occupies the, that conducts the business there.
I spoke with...
The zoning that they're proposing, what all could they use it for?
Well, the only two uses that they're asking for are offices and residential building, single-family, and they've got a condition that they would keep the house. The NO district does require some landscaping up at the street and around the parking. They're only allowed to have two parking spaces in the front. Any other parking spaces have to be around the side or rear. Lighting, any lighting has to be eight-foot-tall lights or less, and there's an eight-square-foot sign limitation for the NO district.
So really, as far as changing the exterior of the look of the house, then, besides having an eight-foot sign maybe, we're not required to have any lighting outside?
That's right.
Eight-square feet.
Eight-square feet.
Oh, eight-square.
No, they're not required to have any lighting.
May I speak again?
Yes, ma'am.
Just like to comment on the parking. If you look at the home, it's a very deep lot, and there's already paved parking in the back of the house. So the intention is, if we do put in a handicap spot, it would be in the back, and the entry would be in the back. So there, from the street, there would be no visibility of it being extra cars parked there at all. There's lots and lots of parking. There was something else.
Would you let us add that as a condition to this request, to your request? Would you allow us to add that as a condition?
Sure. Absolutely. Yeah. Yeah, and as far as a sign, it would not be a sign for advertising purposes. It would only be a sign that would indicate that this is the location, since we're not changing how the house looks at all, just to let people know this is where the business is. It would not be for advertising purposes or lit up or anything like that.
I have a question to Gary. It says here that the area plan was done in 2011. Is there an update planned anytime soon?
Yes. The Northeast Suburban Area Plan is going to be, actually started end of this month with the first public meeting.
I don't know if you can answer this, but do you anticipate any changes in the recommendations for this particular stretch?
I could not answer that.
We've, we've not gotten to that point with our staff discussions. We usually wait till after that first meeting, and then, then the next subject we usually take up is land use, and the staff talks about it, and then we have the second committee meeting that focuses on land use.
I can appreciate the staff's position on this reason, but I did, I called Mr. Wicker, who owns the property just to the left there, about five, six acre tract of land, just to see how he felt, and he did comment or compliment you folks on keeping him advised, and had received a couple of letters, and he didn't have a strong opinion either way. He said that there had not been any problems recently, but in the past, there had been some more issues with tenants than, he actually felt like it'd be less of an impact on him. His son is living there now. If this were an office as opposed to residential rental, but I understand it's sitting in the middle of, you know, some yellow, you know, but...
But it's such, you know, it's a...
The house sits back off the road. Any cars that are there are backed, it's not going to be very intrusive if it were an office, so I can, I hate to go against the staff's recommendation, but I don't have a big problem with what they're requesting.
My issue with it is we're not ruling on the house. We're ruling on the land and the zoning on that. Their intentions, unless we could put a restriction on it that says that they have to keep the house in the, no, in the same way, is that, is that absolutely written in here? But generally, when you do zoning, that means they can tear down the house at any point or sell it to somebody, the next person, and put something else in it. That's the reason I asked about this, though.
But is that possible, Gary?
Well, the condition reads, "The existing structure shall be retained in its original existing location on the site."
And, and so if they sell it, will that go with it?
Yes.
Yes.
Goes with the ownership. Now, that doesn't get into the maintenance issue, but that just stays with any property as far as maintenance goes, minimum housing code, or, but as far as the location of the structure.
What is the policy reason behind allowing for home business, you know, like a beauty shop or whatever else, when you live there? What is the, what's the underlying policy for that? Why is it better if you live there than if you don't live there?
Well, I think the idea is to retain the residential character. If you've got residential zoning and a home occupation, you're allowing the possibility of the occupant doing a limited kind of business there that has very, very low impact, but still keeping the residential use. So I think that's, that's typical, that's the idea behind our ordinance and most other ordinances that I've heard of and worked of, worked with over my years, has been very similar in terms of home occupations.
Yeah. Are there time, on a home occupation exception to residential zoning, are there time limits as to when the home occupant can operate his business, or is there a limit as to the number of people that can, he can, you know, they can cut hair, or I used to go to the accountant, did it?
They can have one outside employee.
They can have one outside employee.
Right.
But there's no hours limitation? There's no...
I don't believe so, off the top of my head.
Car count, traffic?
Look it up real quick. The UDO has a section...
I understand that, but I'm trying to find out what the meaningful difference is with the very limited use that they're asking for in home office, which is, we allow everywhere.
One of the primary restrictions, again, is the square footage. It's 25% of your floor area. That's the most it can be devoted.
Or the business park.
It's got to be conducted within, inside of that structure.
Right. But the traffic impact on the home occupied versus this, probably more traffic per the The UDO has a section.
I understand that, but I'm trying to find out what the meaningful difference is with the very limited use that they're asking for in home office, which is all we allow everywhere.
One of the primary restrictions, again, is the square footage. It's 25% of your floor area. That's the most it can be devoted, right.
Business park, right.
It's got to be conducted within, inside of that structure.
But the traffic impact on the home occupied versus this, probably more traffic for the home.
More trips per day, probably.
Does the staff know what the status is of the cell tower?
I don't know if it's been permitted or not. It has been approved, but as far as construction permits, I don't know if those.
Of course, as you know, cell towers, according to the ordinance, are allowed with either, well, with a special use permit from the elected body, but it's among the uses that is allowed in the existing single family zoning. So there was a judgment made when that ordinance was done that if it followed the rules and it was approved, that it could be, could be compatible with, with single family zoning and use there.
That's, to me, that's, one of the downsides of that is, when you've got neighbors then trying to keep that residential feel there with a hundred-foot tower in your backyard.
Yeah, I, I, I can understand that, but my concern here is really with the precedent because unless we're prepared for this entire block, you know, from Grover all the way up to, you know, the old Blues Creek Road, to go commercial slash office, then we shouldn't, we shouldn't approve this. I mean, because this would be the deciding factor for all the other properties, and it sounds like that's what the petitioners are saying is already the case. But I don't know that it is, you know, and it's not what's recommended in the area plan. And if we, you know, this would set a bad precedent for our body to, to approve this, because then other people, you know, could go ask for the same thing on other sites in the middle of a block surrounded by residential. I mean, the, the, the impact here may not be great in this one case, but I think you've got to look at the bigger picture, looking at the precedent that we're setting for this area, and also for other cases throughout the city.
And that's right across from Cruz, isn't it?
Comments, any board members?
Well, at the same time, Melinda, I understand what you're saying. I don't, I don't disagree, because if it was a regular, I mean, this is such a low-impact zoning. I mean, even if they wanted to bring, come in here and do that whole area NOL, I wouldn't have a problem with it. I understand what you're saying about setting the precedence, and, you know, if we were asking for business-type zoning or that type thing. But even what was mentioned about, you know, I've heard, I've been on this board for a long time, and I've heard about these spot zonings or whatever, whether legal or not and that type thing. And that's the reason I asked a question about, about a spot zoning. But, you know, what Gary just said about it, even, even if somebody, I don't think you would carry any weight, it's not really a spot zoning. It's such low impact, I don't think the neighbors are even going to, to feel any repercussion of this whatsoever. And what Arnold brought up about rental property, my goodness, I'd much rather have, if I was the neighbor, I'd much rather have this lady doing her business out of this home than I have a tenant over there, and that's not saying anything about anybody at all. I'm just, that's in the general conversation I had. These people have kept this property up, and, and, you know, it's, it looks nice and all the above, and that's just, that was my thinking on it. You know, I, I, I understand what you're saying, because if they were coming in for business or whatever, then we wouldn't do it. And, and, you know, I think that that would be a spot zoning if, if that was coming in like that. But with it coming in with such low impact, and, you know, I'm a little concerned about the sign, but I don't think that there's going to be much, you know, they indicate they're just basically going to put up an address, a sign, and so I don't, I don't really think that that will be a problem. We don't have anybody here against it. They held their meeting, just like we've always asked them to do. And I, I feel like that, and I feel like it would be okay. I'm going to say, I really do, that's the reason that I asked all these questions.
Yeah, I just, I just think it's important that we have boundaries.
Yeah.
And the reason that, the rationale for the LO rezoning that's next to the institutional piece there, further up the, the road, the vet, is what I'm talking about.
Mm-hmm.
The rationale for that was that it was right next to an institutionally-zoned property, and that, and there was a natural boundary there.
Yeah.
Now, we're saying, okay, boundaries don't matter. We're not going to set any boundaries, we'll just piecemeal, you know, make these approvals. And I just don't, you know, I, I really believe that if we're, you know, we really ought to set the boundaries. And going back to that vet, you know, the, the vet is not that impactful, but they did put up an electronic sign. You can see it right there, there's a picture of it. And.
This does touch institutional, you know, it's, it's institutional directed to the east, the church.
It's in the middle of a whole residential block.
Yeah, it is.
I guess the thing for me is, is allowing that cell tower there, really, you know, to me, that's, that's as impactful as institutional next to you, and I, I, I think we just, I think that's our responsibility in terms of trying to not impact residential places, but this really gets it from there. And I tell you, from my wife being a licensed counselor, I wish we could put a restriction on there that you wouldn't counsel angry people, but I know that, that that's probably why you're there. But I don't know how much that would impact neighbors either.
Well, if I might also speak again, please.
Sure.
We also own the property at 4165 Breezeville Road. And I did operate my home, my business out of my home while I lived there about three years ago, and it was a counseling business.
Where is that?
4165, two, three houses down from this property.
Closer to Edgewood?
Yeah, no.
Down.
The church, the, what's the church across the street?
Cruz.
Cruz.
Cruz, it is also across the street from Cruz.
Three properties to the north.
4135.
Okay.
And that was an office in the home. And that house, when I bought it, was completely run down. There were vandals that had come in and totally vandalized the property. We restored the property, everything, and the neighbors were very, very happy to have us there, and I think that, that this will be the same situation with 4135, because on both sides of us, those houses are vacant, and they have been for one, two years, and the other one for six years. And so having somebody there, I think, in a business would be, as I said before, an asset to that neighborhood.
Yeah, that's another thing, too, is, is, you know, professional people, they do keep their property up, they keep the lawn mowed, they keep everything looking nice. And whereas other, especially if they're vacant, they don't, you know, a lot of people don't even mow the yard, and that type thing.
I'd much prefer to have a very low-intense business next door that is maintained as opposed to a vacant home.
Yeah, exactly.
I mean, I agree with what's, what's, what you've said and what's also said in the, in the report. The area plan, the residential zoning that's, I mean, that's all around, and the precedent that it would set, you know, we want to be careful of that. But in this situation, and actually having visited this particular site, I'm completely comfortable with it, and I'm prepared to make a motion to approve this request.
Second. Motion by Mr. Younger, second by Mr. Lamb. Is there further discussion, any board members?
Is that with the added condition?
With the conditions, I apologize.
The no, all parking be to the rear of the structure?
All parking be to the rear of the structure.
Do you want to eliminate the electronic sign?
I don't know if you can have it in this zoning, just because I already asked that question before we were at sign check.
That's right.
I was told you couldn't have, or, or did you tell me, Gary, you could have an electronic sign or not in this?
Well, you, you can in the LO district. The NO district, it seems like there's a limitation that says all signage has to be externally eliminated, but I'm not, I'm not 100% sure. I guess you could make that as a condition, and then we realize that it's not necessary.
Would you have a problem with that?
Please add that as a condition.
Not internally eliminated, that's fine.
Okay.
We're looking for nine to six, no problem.
I'm going to add that condition.
Yes, I just did.
And you in my second.
Any, any further discussion?
And one thing I would like to say, I understand what the staff's up against here when you looked at this, and believe me, I can appreciate that. And, you know, it's like we all know, when we all get here together and we hear what's going on or whatever, sometimes it does make, it does make a difference. But I should not say anything, it's, I love you guys, so no problem.
All right, we have a motion for approval. All in favor? Any opposed? Mr. Dunn going to oppose. Okay, thank you.
The chairman, I would say that when we went out and visited this site, and, and we heard a little bit of this here, this road is dangerous. It, it was dangerous for our driver to, to get back out, even though you could turn around on the property there. And, and you know it, running along there, it's wonderful that they're going to go four lanes with it, but I think Melinda's right, they really need to look in this area plan and decide, can, can residential, are they going to allow it to be a way that residents can get in and on it? Or does it need to be some kind of transitional property or something like that when they get to this point? That needs to be very seriously looked at, because it is going to be, as it is now, a major artery, and it's not just for passenger vehicles, it is for tractor-trailer trucks. And, and that provides a lot of challenges.
Okay, thank you. Staff report?
Okay, not, not too much here, but want to introduce a couple people for you. You, you'll recall, in the inspections division, we had a couple of departures recently. Desmond Corley went on to carry, and maybe some, sometime he'll see the light and come on back this way. But Donna Guffey, also, who you have seen here many times, she was promoted to the permit office supervisor to take the place of a person who is getting ready to retire at the end of this month. So we had both of our zoning plans examiner positions that were vacant. Those are very critical positions. They work a lot with the planning staff as they're reviewing plans that are coming in for permitting in the inspections office. So they, they work a lot together, but I'm pleased to say that we have both those positions now filled. And I want to introduce them to you, because you'll see them occasionally here checking in, just like you saw Desmond and Donna. But Jeff Hunter over there, he has been actually employed with the city for 28 years, and for the last 10 years, he has been in a zoning enforcement officer in inspections. And so he'll be moving over to one of the zoning plans examiners. And then Elizabeth Collier is, has also joined our staff, and she has been in the stormwater division for the last, I guess, one and a half years, but she has worked in local government elsewhere for 10 years. So we're very pleased to have them on board with us. And like I say, you'll be seeing them occasionally here checking in on, on plans that are coming through the planning board, so, anyway. And then the only other thing I have for you is looking ahead to December. We, of course, will have the deadline date in early December for the cases going to the planning board in January. But the sign check that usually happens in late December is, of course, the normal day for sign check would be Monday, the 26th, which is a holiday. So we would normally have, we would normally bump that up to the Friday before, which is the 23rd. 23rd happens to be the last day of work for city employees, and the things get a little bit sketchy in that afternoon as people are trying to, trying to make their way on to family and friends and, and all that. So we would prefer it if we could have sign check in the morning on that date. Does that cause anyone some heartburn to have sign check on the, on the morning of the 23rd, like at 8:15, like we used to have? Does that, does that work for folks, if whoever wants to go on sign check then?
How many cases do we have coming up, Paul?
Well, we won't know, because the deadline date is, is in early December, so.
No, I think for the staff's benefit, we're starting to change that, and if they can make it fine, if they can't, then we just won't. But anyway, go ahead and.
Yes, Friday, the 23rd at 8:15, if that.
I don't have many takers, whether it's 8:15 or 1:15.
Yeah, and it wouldn't, it wouldn't hurt our feelings if y'all don't want to come. We'll, we'll go out and take our pictures and all that, too, but, so, anyway.
I hate to speak for all the board, but is anyone having a problem with that? Okay.
Okay, very good. And that is it for sign, for staff report.
Okay, thank you, Paul. Anything for the good of the order?
Okay, I do have one thing to say. I just want to remind you, I know, hey, this is a good time. Tomorrow's Veterans Day, and I want to thank all of our veterans that have served this country, and thank you for the freedom that we all have. And yes, that is a good thing, and God bless America, and thank goodness the election is over. With that, motion to adjourn.
We're adjourned.